Good evening, councillors.
Evening.
Can I thank everyone for coming this evening? Can we move into item one, which is housekeeping? So can I ask everyone to switch off your mobile phones or make them silent? Um, should there be a fire drill just for me because I'll be first at the door? Can I ask, can I ask the clerk to please say hello? I will definitely be at that door if there is a fire drill because I heard the fire alarm go off earlier in the week. I was on the phone and I have to say to you, I was deafened by the fire alarm. It was very, very, very loud. You couldn't miss it. We move on to item two, apologies for absence. I have apologies for councillor Durham Grimes. He's in county hall. I have apologies for John Cook. He's in a meeting and Alex Craig isn't very well this evening. Can I ask?
Oh, I think it's on hold.
Yeah, apologies on hold.
Yeah.
Can I ask all councillors, do we accept these apologies? And then here, can we move on to item three, declaration of event interest? If those members are invited to declare an interest, are there any members wishing to declare an interest? No. We move on to item four, the change announcement. I only have one thing to say this evening and that was to thank everyone for attending the flag raising event. And on Sunday, as usual, Stanley was its usual blowy street. We got, we got through very well and we didn't get rained on. But I would like to have admitted to thank all the staff for the work they did prior to and for Sunday. And we move on to item five, update from our chief officer.
Welcome everybody tonight. And obviously, as you know, we've been involved with the event that happened on Sunday. And we have the Armed Forces Day this Sunday coming. We have been working with the DLI group on the proposed one more that they wanted to bring forward. We've spent a considerable amount of time working on the policies. It's that time of year where we're trying to get everything updated. And so that's been quite a significant amount of work. In terms of meeting with stakeholders, we've, I sit on the BEMESH partnerships and communities committee. We, the Armed Forces Committee, we've been working with Stanley Park Hair Home and the Stanley Front Street Partnership, which is made up of ourselves and Carben Homes and TCC. Uh, the Durham Side Business Group, working as you know with the Multibank. So that's, that's sort of getting underway. We've put in our first preliminary test order, which we'll look at when later to test that it's working for us and it all works properly. And the email invitations were got to partners and then we'll train them on the system as how to use them. So that's, that should be up and working in the next couple of weeks. And then also we had meetings with the Truth Poverty Commission who are here this evening to give a presentation. Again, it's the time to get a staff appraisal, so that's, that's what we've been doing. And as some of you are aware, we've already had the events in communities committee, the HR policy committee and the finance committees. So it's just a little bit of an update. And obviously it's been left on the new council, because we have our last all councillors day again. So that's kept us busy. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we move on to item six this evening. We have a presentation from the Poverty Truth Commission. Can I hand over to team Catherine?
You can. Yes, thank very much. And I brought some, rather than doing a presentation on the screen, I brought some handouts. However, they are quite small, so apologies for that. And I don't think I've quite got enough. So even if you have got one, you might not be able to read it. So let's just hope that it's all going to work out okay. If I do sort of one in each direction. And just to pass those around if that's all right. Oh, I suppose I should have one as well. Just make sure I know what's at the right. Okay then, so, um, my name's Catherine and the coordinator for the Poverty Truth Commission. I work at Durham Community Action. And so Durham Community Action is the infrastructure organisation for County Durham, as you may well know. And been working there since last year, really all this on project mainly my colleague Julie, a project worker. But she's on holiday at the moment, so I'm here by myself. And also when we spoke earlier on, there was an idea that perhaps some of the community commissioners we're working with at the moment would be able to come along and explain a little bit more about it to you. Unfortunately, none of them are available tonight. They're all very busy. And I wanted to come to Stanley on a Tuesday evening, you know, the mist out there, haven't they? So what I'll do is I'll just explain what a Poverty Truth Commission is first of all. I know I've spoken to a couple of people in the room, so some people might know what it's about. I'm assuming that the majority don't. So the idea of a Poverty Truth Commission is basically that those people who've got lived experience of poverty come together with decision makers and that they together identify some priorities and look at making better decisions. So that's the basis of it. The way that the process that we use is by identifying first of all, some community commissioners. They are people who've got lived experience of poverty, who are willing to share their story and who are probably got some fire in their belly about wanting to bring about some change. Work with them for probably about six months. And during that time, really sort of looking at preparing for a launch event. And the launch event is where those people will share their stories. And that will then be the start of the next phase of the Poverty Truth Commission. While that bit is going on, we're also recruiting what we call the civic commissioners. So the civic commissioners are senior leaders within statutory, um, private voluntary sectors. People who are likely to have decision making responsibility around the areas that the Poverty Truth, the community commissioners are likely to identify. So things like health, transport, housing, business, so a whole range of different things in those sorts of arenas. The, once the launch event has happened, then we start meeting together as a full commission. So the community commissioners and the civic commissioners will come together, start meeting together. And they'll spend some time getting to know each other first of all. So what we're wanting to do is to break away from a usual meeting where we're all sat behind, behind desks with, with sort of notepads and everything, but really sort of start to connect on a more human level and get to know each other. So that both sides, that sounds very sort of antagonistic, doesn't it? But so that the different, different people understand each other as individuals rather than just as somebody who might be a client or somebody who might be making decisions. So the idea is that we look at ways of bringing them together to get to know each other a little bit better. And then they will together identify some issues and to, and to start working on them, start working on some priorities. So the idea is not that it's a, a normal consultation type approach. It's not about case studies. It's not about any of those things where there is an intermediary. It's very much about people saying directly to the decision makers, that these are the things that we want to work on. And, and that it might, might sort of align with what it is that you're talking about. But it might also be something that's more important to me than the priorities that you've identified. And so in that way, the hope is that there will be better decisions made. The, there have been about thirty or forty Poverty Truth Commissions around the country and in various different places over the last ten to fifteen years. And Leeds, for example, has had four over the last ten years. We've had Morecambe Bay on their third now. So there's been a sort of, a lot of experience around the country in rural areas and in, in urban areas. And they have been looking at issues, probably not issues that would surprise you because those are the issues that are affecting most people in poverty. But issues, for example, around housing, around looking at what it is that's, um, sort of, you know, left in the house when people are leaving, looking at training for doctors, looking at, um, the language that's used around, around letters which are coming in for demands, looking at send provisions. So a whole range of things which affect people in their day to day lives, whatever it is that they're saying they prioritize. So that's the sort of structure, if you like, of a Poverty Truth Commission, is it? If anybody's got any questions about that bit, yes.
Yeah, I worked in a school and there was children that weren't being fed on the morning. The teachers used to pay for them to have meals now, but the actual parents were buying bottles of cheap cider and buying drugs with the money. So how, how can we sort of work out who's the genuine poverty people?
So that's not, that's not our role.
Right.
And our role is, so we're not making a definition around poverty. So I mean, poverty means lots of things to lots of different people.
Yeah, yeah.
And what we want to know is that people have got that experience and that they're coming to us and that we, we will, um, work with the priorities that they identify. Now, we know that people come with a whole range of issues. They come with issues around domestic abuse, around homelessness, around debt, around addiction. So there's a whole range of, you know, relationship breakdown, mental health, physical health problems. And so there's a whole range of things that people come with. We don't, so Julie and I, we don't judge. We will talk to people, we're like, um, we will, in this sort of recruitment process, if you like, we will talk to them and try and understand what it is their experience. And if they have got an experience, they are, um, willing to share their story and they do want things to change, then we will.
It's a genuine case, you know, Nadia.
We would say that if, if they can sort of fulfill those criteria, then that will be what it is that we will be working towards. So we don't do any, um, any sort of means testing or anything. We don't say, right, okay, you need to have this level of income. We take it, it's taken on trust to a certain extent because if you're wanting to work with people, then there does have to be a level of trust there. That's where we're at. Anything else about the process? Yeah.
A quick question. Obviously I was told that Julie, I've been packed out. And I've got quite a few of my wellbeing group joining in with this.
Hopefully.
I was still looking at starting in September or do you think might be a little bit sooner?
Um, so where we're at at the moment, in, so jumping ahead of me in terms of this sort of process. If I sort of go back a little bit, um, so we've been working in South Durham so far. And the stage we're at in South Durham is we have the launch event down there in Newton Aycliffe, Newton Community Centre in March. And, um, and so we're now into this sort of full commission meeting. So we've started meeting the full with the civic commissioners and the community commissioners. The reason why I'm here today is because we are starting to look at doing something around the Stanley area. So we've been out and about, going to places like Packed House. Where have I been today? I've been to North Durham Academy, I've been to Catchgate School, going to the police tomorrow. Went somewhere yesterday. I can't remember where I went yesterday. And so, you know, we've been sort of going out and about, went to meet people down in Tamfield, please, last week. So, um, oh, and I was in concert yesterday. So, um, so talking to a whole range of people. And the idea is that we will recruit hopefully about sort of fifteen sort of community commissioners. At the moment, we're saying it'll probably be round about September when we're ready to start. However, if we've got a group of people who are all there and ready to go and we've got sufficient, we could start sooner. And Julie's off on her holidays now. I'm going on holiday in July. So after that, we don't have anything else that we're doing during August. So we could start then if people were ready. It depends on when we get, you know, people.
I've got six out of my wellbeing group that's in person.
It's wonderful. Yeah. So hopefully, yeah, yeah. So we'll have a sort of chat about that. And like I say, we're talking to other places as well and looking to see where we can recruit. So, um, on two of those pages there, so on the second, on the third and the fourth, that was really just sort of showing. Again, it's teeny tiny, isn't it? And so the third one is saying where we're at in South Durham at the moment. So we're in the bit involved, we're on the full commission. And then in Stanley, we're on that first bit, engaging with community organisations and starting to recruit. So the process that we're going to go through for that, hopefully there's a little bit of a timeline there. And I mean, I've said September on there. None of these are fixed in stone. So certainly it depends on, you know, when we're ready and when we're, when we're needing, when we're ready to get started on things. March next year, we'll have a launch event, um, somewhere in around the Stanley area. And then from April next year, we're aiming to start meeting the full commission. Having a sharing event in spring twenty seven and then the embedding going on after that. So those are the stages that we're at. Any questions around that? Yes.
Are you totally government funded?
And we are funded through the county council and through their point north.
Thank you. Excuse my ignorance, but is the whole idea and ethos of this group to get people who have suffered poverty, people in other areas who can try and manage and being decision makers to assist the group that you're getting in, to manage their poverty, to, to, to get them out of poverty? What exactly, because you've said you're getting commissioners and you've said you're getting people to come. What exactly is the true thing to do?
So it, it depends on what the priorities that they identify are. So for example, in, in Gateshead, when they had a Poverty Truth Commission, the thing was that they were looking at housing. So what was available when people moved into housing? So it's not about that individual person saying, look, I need a house, I need this, that and the other. Are you going to get it for me? It's about trying to look at some of the systemic problems and look at the organisational issues which are having the biggest impact on people who are living in poverty.
So, so say, say we picked housing, the group's yeah, housing. Is it then a case of if somebody's in poverty, then they're going into a house? That they need certain things to get them up and running, not, not necessarily the finer things in life, just the things they may need to get them started? Is that the point exactly? So I'm struggling to under, it might just be me, I'm struggling to understand just exactly what the end outcome is.
So it depends what it is that they identify that they want to work on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it could be that, yes, they say, so for example, one of our group at the moment, she's moved into a house and she said, um, she, she, in order to be able to get, um, bedding, that it was a loan. And she ended up, would end up paying back far more on the loan out of a very limited income. So it's, yeah, well, hang on a minute, look, isn't it, so isn't there a better way around of doing this? Is there a different system that we can look at and implement? That may or may not be one of the things that they, they start looking at. But that, you know, sort of start saying, right, okay, so who, who is it who makes a decision around that? Is it the DWP? Is it, you know, where is it? And are there other places where people could go to go and get bedding, which might be sort of thirty quid?
Yeah.
As opposed to paying an ongoing loan, which is going to end up. So it's trying to identify the things that are going to be important to them. And along with the people who are, um, who are making decisions around those areas. We're not going to be able to solve everything. Um, because poverty's a big issue and it's been around for a long time. And, you know, so it's, but it's trying to identify things that they could, you know, that, that will potentially be, um, a benefit to them. So, I mean, some of the other things that, that people have looked at in different parts of the country. They've looked, they've looked at sort of transport and sort of bus routes. And looked at improving medical training for, um, doctors. Because if you are, um, if you are experiencing poverty and there are a number of different things which are bang, 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 then actually maybe getting to your appointment on time is not going to be feasible. Or if you've got a child with special needs, then you might need to spend more time doing that. So actually, you know, what is it within the health system that can be looked at to, to, which will make life a bit better for those people who are involved? And are there better routes of communication? I mean, everyone here knows that there is a lot of support and advice available in different ways. But quite often, if you ask people, they don't know where it is. So is it that there is a different way of delivering advice? I don't know. These are things which are potentials. And, and so it will be then looking at some of those systemic things rather than just about the individual thing. It will come from our individual experiences to say, look, this is, when, when this happened to me. If somebody had just done this or if that had been different, rather than taking me down this route straight away. If it'd been a, I don't know, like built in a pause period for being able to review something. If there'd been different wording in the letter, then maybe that would have opened it. Or if they, you know, rather than just putting it in a drawer and ending up in arrears or in debt. And, you know, so are there things that can be done to make, make life easier for people? And to stop some of the suffering further down the line? Does that answer your question? Does it give some examples or it's still a bit vague?
No, no, it just seems like it's going to be a group of people coming together, which I guess. Um, and I don't know whether you would explain it differently.
Well, my understanding of it is it's bringing people with lived experience together to identify what the cause of poverty or what contribute factors, factors of poverty are in the area we're in. So it'd be looking at what several people come together, say, this is a massive cause of concern here specifically. So it's why it's divided among different areas, why what you're working on in South Durham isn't the same as what we'd be working on here. And then once that group of people with experience have identified those causes of concern, then you bring in the people who are decision makers to work towards changing policy and changing routines and schedules.
To a certain extent, but they, it won't be, it's not that the community commissioners will decide entirely by themselves. At the moment, in South Durham, we've identified, I mean, you know, there's a range of issues as long as you're on. And we're not going to be able to look at all of them. So we're going to probably identify together, so the community commissioners and the civic commissioners. So once we've got those people together, say, you know, what are the things that we can start working on? What have we got the experience in the room to be able to, to, um, affect change with? And so there's no point in us, for example, saying we need to build, we need to reopen steelworks or whatever like that. Because we have other people in the room who can do that. And so it's what is it that's manageable for those people there? Which will have a much wider impact than just that individual, but it is sort of a collective.
Yeah.
Collective decision led by the community commissioners, but not, it's not entirely their, their responsibility there.
Uh, it was more to explain the way Julie ran across to some of my group. Obviously I've got quite a variety of people with different understandings. But the way she ran across is we're basically going to be getting brought together in a room. And we're going to build up some sort of bond between, between the group. We're going to discuss the different issues and then we're going to be getting introduced to the, basically the suits who are bookmarked but don't necessarily have any life experience. And we're basically trying to work with them to bring things to light that you don't just read in the paperwork. It's not the reality of things. Because you know yourself when you read like graphs, stats, all the rest of it, it looks fantastic. I mean, Durham's apparently not too bad up when you read some of the statistics. But in reality, we hope that Stanley, it's all looking sort of. So that's why it was explained to us that it's, we're actually going to be here when I've just laid there, uh, filmed the seven and talked to this people. So it's actually going to make progress, hopefully, but it's a long process and it's multiple stages to it.
And I think the value is it's in those relationships. And again, um, you know, sort of, it's not, it's not sort of task and finish. So we're not, there we are, we've had that consultation or we've done that thing and so we can finish now. The repercussions, again, from other parts of the country are that it will continue for many years. So for example, someone who was involved in the, um, who was a civic commissioner over in Morecambe Bay. I know that best because we, we talk quite frequently, we do a lot of support in the Poverty Truth Network. And so the person there who was a GP is now the chief medical officer for the North West. He's taken that into his role as chief medical officer. And so then it informs his decisions. So whereas in the past he might have been thinking about them entirely, not entirely, sure, chief medical officers do, to be honest with you. I don't quite know what decisions they make, but the decisions that he's making now are informed by a different understanding of twenty percent of the population who will be using his services. And that hopefully means that those services will better deliver for.
To an extent, to try and change the system.
Oh, yes, yeah. But in a quiet way, not a revolutionary way at the moment.
It will make it, my belief of the days that, that at the end result will make things more efficient. So, you know, there is a cost to every single thing that, that, you know, professional people do, there is a cost. And if you've got twenty five people who are in distress and they're in distress because they're poor and they've got two children and little Johnny doesn't want to go to school, but I have an appointment at the doctor's. Well, I can't keep that appointment because I can't take Johnny and nobody will watch him and all those things. So that appointment is wasted. So that's an amount of cash that is wasted. Now, there, there will be a system, there will be something that we'll be able to create that she can just drop in or he can just drop in and, and perhaps be seen. It might be five minutes, but it might not be. Uh, but because the world has been strict in how we, we do things and it is, you know. Um, and there may be, you know, we're talking about curtains, there may be a system where, you know, all the shops and businesses could put them into a place and you can, you know, like the, um, Multibank. We, there could be a process for that. It's just people, when you're, when you're in distress and you're poor, you don't know where to go because you're so busy in the chaotic being that is poor, that you need somebody to come along and hold your hand and just say, we can do this, this, this will be fine, that, you know, we'll get through this with you. This is, this, we've made this much simpler. So all you have to do is that. And it's about, we haven't looked at systems for long and long enough. And you put them in the place and the world moves on and the system stays in the same place. You know, I, you know, my mom tells the story of, of when you would pay the, the doctor a penny and you sat in the waiting room and you could be there for all day, you know. Um, and there has, there has to be a better system than we have. And it's looking at that, I believe. It's, it's the real people with the people who make the decisions talking together for probably the first time in fifty, sixty or a hundred years. Is how I think of it, you know, what I, my understanding of it is.
So there's a few asks to a certain extent. So we are still in the process of recruiting. So if anyone here knows or, or people who've got that experience, who might be willing to share and who've got a bit of fire in their belly and wants to make some changes, um, then pass on my contact details are on there. I, I did print off some lovely posters for you all. And but then realized I've done the wrong one and sort of all got Bishop Portland on part rather than Stanley. So apologies for that. I've got two, which I've got Stanley on, which isn't really very good. But I can send some through electronically. Uh, you can make some copies as well. So we have that. That's got my contact details on the bottom. So if there's anybody who wants to get in touch with me, um, uh, there's, if you follow the little barcode, it takes you to the website and we've put on a lot of the information from the launch event that we held down in Newton Aycliffe, which has got lots of stories on there, um, from the community commissioners. If you know of other places where we can go to recruit, you know, there are activities which are going on or community organisations, any contact details, I'd be very willing to listen to that. Hopefully when we have the launch event next year, some or most of you will be able to come along and come and sort of see what's going on. And then the following year, the, um, final event. So, and some of you may well be people who might want to ask to be co-civic commissioners as well at some stage. And so that might be something that, you know, we can sort of think about in the future. Um, but if there is anything else that you want to know, please do get in touch with me. Yes.
Just wondering if you've been in touch with the local MPs?
Not yet. I have to say that I've been trying to get in touch with the local MPs down in, in, uh, in the South, in the county. And that's been semi, semi-successful, but we'll try again.
I know that the, that people in the North End who's a lot of consistent, yeah, to poverty. So they'll probably have information that is common in this area that also might be able to pass on the details.
Lovely. Thank you. Yeah. I mean, any contacts that you've got, please do.
Are you in touch with Daniel O'Brien?
Yes.
Yeah, seems very useful. He knows all about Jackson Street.
We spoke to him and, um, we're still working our way through the list of people he sent us. Any more questions? Any more questions?
I'd say thank you so much. Um, if you would like to stay, you can stay, but if you would like to go, you can go.
That would be key.
I don't know how to say that on a Sunday.
I, I need you to leave you to your, um, yeah, I do need to be up to get out.
Yeah, you shall as well.
I'll be sure. All right then. Thanks very much. So we move on to item seven. Um, participation, are there any questions? Are there any questions from the floor? No questions? We move on to item eight. To approve as a true record and sign the minutes of the annual meeting as a council held on the thirteenth of May. To approve as a true report and sign the minutes of the annual meeting as a council held on the thirteenth of May twenty twenty five. Can I have a mover? And a seconded, so councillor Kimby and councillor Tony. Are we all agreed?
Yeah.
We move on to item nine, now these are the policy renewals amendments. Um. Can we, have we all read the policies?
Yes.
Excellent. Councillor Tony?
Chair, if I can ask or propose that we accept these on mass instead of go through each one individually?
Or is everyone, can I have a second if I ask? Is everyone agreed?
Yeah.
So are we all agreed to accept these policies on mass? Okay. Now they'll fit nicely into your folder.
Polities there are.
We move on to item ten, the update from our county councillors.
I'll go first, um so I'll cover the um, I'll be playing with Tampey Lake as well. Um so from a county level, we're obviously still in training, so we've got quite a bit of training, not having to attend um meetings after week after week. But we've managed to get out a little bit. Um we've attended the beginning date that is held and Stortley went there last week, that was lovely. And went to the flag raising. Um we've got some meetings set up, so I'm at Tampey Lake tomorrow, no, Thursday, sorry, for um the reveal of the safest school gates posters. Um we've got meetings with the Activity Den, Tampey Lake Community Centre, um Morrison Rusty to meet the boarders. But then I'm also going back to the Morrison Rusty to have a walk around the site. And they're going to update us on what they want to do at the site. And with regards to the queues for the, you know, the rubbish tip and things like that. Um I've still got to meet with Packed House and also Ample England Cricket Club. We're waiting for the D V S checks from Durham Rains, Council of Rains to come back before we can actually go into the schools and meet with the schools. And so Croft, Tampey Bay, Ample England.
So I did, willing of my own.
Oh, right, okay. Um also, we're working in the background on things, so you might have noticed that article four, we're working on, um with regards to V H M Os. So that's being put on board, so we've got V H M Os on board at the moment. We're also working on a number of other things. And information will come out in July on those things as well, so I can't really say anything about those at the moment. That's for the whole of Stanley.
Well, Chair and Councillors, um thank you for allowing me to present this. Um I'm going to make it a little bit long winded, which I hope doesn't offend anyone and it's not directed at anyone. I hope it will address some of the concerns that have been raised, the right cloud being worked being undertaken. And perhaps can stop the uncalled for negative comments on my councillor Facebook page. Once I acknowledge that I'm not from this county, um I am the same with deep commitment to the area. Having lived in various parts of the North East for twenty five years, including key twenty two years with my late partner, who was born and bred.
Sony Thompson. Is this?
This is on to give a report of what I think I'm doing.
Right.
But I need to stress these points before doing so, Chair. Um I'm getting so much abuse from the area, from Facebook. And there are circumstances which people around this room would not be aware of, so I can continue with your information.
Sorry, can I just, when you're saying circumstances around the area, is it?
No, the personal circumstances I should stress. Right, so having lived in the North East for twenty five years, um which included twenty two years with my late partner. He was born and bred in the county, taught me to love the county. Um she encouraged me to stand for a election as we both witnessed the decline across the county. And wanted to make a positive difference for residents. A fellow Reform councillor, as I serve both this council and Durham County Council, which has required extensive training, a steep learning curve. Understanding both council structures. This has temporarily limited our availability for some community events, but hasn't diminished the dedication to resolve residents' concerns. Which I'll describe later. My, but my role as vice chair of the overseeing scrutiny committee on Durham County Council. Again, has restricted my activity in the local resources. Since taking office, I have been diligently trying to address residences by residents, attending as many local meetings as possible. And seven key categories of concern have been identified and are being actively pursued by myself and other councillors. Uh through correlated nation with Durham County Council and relevant departments. Once the intensive D C T training periods conclude, I look forward to increased involvement in Southmore and Pelton by D C C area. The concerns, issues, there's footpath safety in sports centres down there, rubbish in gardens and yards, neighbourhood protection. Dogs in litter bins, planning applications, fencing in new kio, funding requests, they've all come across my desk. And I've taken time, effort, had battles with some of our staff in the D C C. And I can give a report on the first five often. The first one for the footpath in Front Street has been resolved and work will be taken on. It was down to a funding issue, um and we addressed the funding issue and now it's been passed over for getting sorted. So that one's completed. Rubbish in car, gardens, uh was in Park Road, Southmore. Um they've visited the property four or five times and not resolved anything. The rubbish has been taken away, but it's still building up. Um on that basis, a breach of community action notice has been issued. The shop has been fined one thousand pounds and further action is ongoing, all right? So that's. The last one is around the whole of Stanley area, I'm getting reports of dog bins, litter bins. Some loose, not bolted to the ground, that have fallen over and are rubbish strewn across. It's affecting handicapped people, people with disabilities and general population and and. I've raised that issue on three occasions and only on the second of June, I reported it yet again. Um and I've escalated it to the team manager and I'm waiting a report back on that. So as you can see, I've been doing some things on getting action done, contrary to what has been posted on my Facebook and other places. Um I also have been fighting strongly for an application in Southmore. Uh to get a non-adopted road re-adapted or taken over or allowed to raise funds to get it resurfaced. Because it's an absolute disgrace, it's a danger, it's a health risk. So I've normally raised it with highways, I've raised it with health and safety and environment. Uh and I'm waiting a report on that, I have a meeting with some of them tomorrow. Um the fencing in new kio has been reported so many times. Um I'm trying to look at ways of raising funding to get it done. And I may use some of my funding from Stanley, three hundred pound or something towards that. All right? Um other funding requests in Stanley, I haven't had that many, but Pelton have been inundated. And I'm working very hard and I've just got approval today for a raction of a, an existing, a war memorial that got lost. Seventy five years it's been in storage. Uh I'm getting print built in Pelton Memorial Park and that print to adorn it. We're getting two flags raised and we'll be doing an event which will hopefully get an invite to you all from our uh armed forces people on the council. To raise the flags and dedicate the memorial. Um I hope that concludes, my feelings have been disappointed in the attitude of some people around the area. And especially the comments, but I can assure you and assure the residents that I will do my best. Not just for myself, but legal, but for my dead partner. Um I will say it straight, my dead partner died ten weeks ago, it's been difficult. And I'm annoyed, disgusted at some of the comments and I hope they will stop now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Um can I just say, it doesn't need to be as comprehensive as that.
I appreciate that, but I had to.
Yeah, yeah, and and I understand that, but but for the next time, it doesn't need to be as comprehensive.
I do appreciate it didn't have to be so comprehensive, but I think the reports needed to be given.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, Ian, you mentioned comments on Facebook and other social media.
Yeah.
Uh obviously, when you were in county council, would you be able to confirm if anyone's actually doing anything about the comments you're councillors on?
I haven't reported the last.
Can I just, can I just stop everyone there?
Hmm.
That is not something that we will discuss in this meeting.
Thank you.
If someone wishes to have a conversation about that, feel free to have a conversation outside. But within this council meeting, that's not something we'll discuss.
Thank you.
No problem. Um I have actually put emails in as complaints and then you saw that I put a report down in another route, which a lot of people won't scroll down, so.
And I understand that, again, that's a process, the town, you know, our officer will will perhaps guide you on if you need some some advice on that, if you're stuck. Um but but to be honest, Facebook is not a subject that I'm going to discuss in this council, ever.
I agree with you.
Ever. Because we all have stories that we could tell and it's just not the place to do it. It is not the place for our loyalty.
Chair, my report I've read is wrong and is not the sort of report I would give for issues. But I had to get that off my chest.
That's fine.
I had to make it open and clear, but I have not been sitting on my backside doing nothing.
That's fine.
All right? And I'm not the invisible man as I'm being called.
Do you have any question?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I believe your councillor, county councillor for Pelton.
Yes.
Only got three parish councils in your board where you can make that report. You wouldn't be making a county councillor report.
I was supposed to attend parish councils tomorrow night, but um I won't be able to attend because I have a previous meeting.
So 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 for here, you would only report on the things that are in this area, the Pelton ones.
I only reported, the ones I reported are outside there.
Yeah, yeah, I was just kind of.
Yeah, I was just saying the other things that were going on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the report, you know, the county councillor for Pelton, that you'd only, you should only be talking about in this meeting, regarding his family.
That's all I spoke about, again, the way I saying about some actions that were going on in Pelton. But the issues that I've resolved and fought for are all in Stanley, all in Southmore.
James?
Yeah, I'm just a bit confused, um sorry, Chair. Uh you mentioned about unadopted roads, that wouldn't fall within the remit of the Stanley Town Council?
No, it wouldn't.
That would need to be raised via the county council, the county board of that area.
It'll be raised, raised by those two councilor.
So let me, let me just explain, um what we're asking county councillors to do is to basically just give us an overview of what you've done. Between last month and this month, and that's that's where we go. And only things that are relevant to whatever area you're sitting for the county council. The area you sit in for the county council and the town council could be very different and and that's where we confuse some things.
Because that was just the point of clarification I was asking for, would we be asking councillor Murray to report as a county councillor here, despite the fact that he is not a county councillor for this area?
Not for Pelton.
Right.
You would do the Southmore.
Southmore is a way, I maybe shouldn't have mentioned what I was getting about, because all the previous stuff was about starting Southmore.
So is everybody clear on that now? That's, it will be, it will literally be twisting.
Um being out of school a long time, the training has been hard for us, so my apologies for not doing as much as I could have done. But I have been involved with some residents, I've been to a lot of packed meetings and speaking to the police, et cetera. And and I'm meeting with carbon homes tomorrow and I'll introduce myself to quite a few carbon managers.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, can we remove all the two, the next item, thank you councillors. Um um item eleven is planning applications, um obviously a progress, um submitted to you. Um no one's brought anything up, but should you wish to, obviously, feel free. We move on.
Sorry, um I don't know if anybody is from Tampey Lake in the door.
Yeah.
Um because we've had to plan applications to close the road at Bungalows.
All right.
Um and I've put in a query because I know the bungalows are one way in and one way out. So I've actually raised a query about that, so just to let you know, in case you get letters from the gas board for anyone saying that the road's going to be closed. I am actually on clearing it at the moment.
Thank you. Yes, it's the normal gas upgrade, yeah.
Thank you.
So we move on to the normal questions, we move on to item twelve, date and time, venue, next meeting, so it's Tuesday, the twenty second of July. Twenty twenty five at six thirty in the greenhouse. As soon as nearly. We move on to item thirteen. And that is to resolve under Republic Body's Admissions to Meetings Act nineteen sixty, republican representatives of press and broadcasting media be excluded to the meeting during consideration of the following items of business. As publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest due to the confidential nature of the business to be turned right. Can I have a mover? On the, in, can I have a second? Thank you, councillor Tony.